Good evening. I'd like to call to order tonight's school committee meeting. May I have an approval of tonight's agenda, please?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any comments from the public tonight? Okay, moving on to presentations and discussions of interest to the committee. Could we please have Stacy Edgewall and Paige Martino come do a presentation on the NEAS update, please?
Hi.
Hi.
Hello.
Hello.
Welcome.
So I'm Paige Martino. This is Stacy Edgewall. We're the NEAS co-chairs. And we thought it would be important to come to you all and talk to you a bit about the NEAS process. It's something that the high school has been working on all year long. And in thinking about tonight, we just sort of came up with a list of possible questions that you might be thinking to yourselves when you see the words NEAS. What is accreditation? What's the process? What is our reason for participating in the process? What's your role as a school committee? Where are we right now in the whole process? And what are the next steps? So I think between the two of us, hopefully, we'll address all those questions. And then if you have additional ones, let us know.
Thank you.
I know this is a very word-heavy slide. I tried to make it as concise as possible. But you know, when people ask why get accredited, I think the biggest thing is that, you know, when you're accredited, you're telling your community, you're telling your students, you're telling your parents that this is a high-quality education that the kids are receiving and that we're committed to continuous growth. And the Committee on Public Secondary Schools, when it comes to accredit us, it, the process demonstrates that we have gone through a process of self-reflection. And we've hosted a visiting team of peers who review the school in terms of goals that we've put forth and according to the standards for accreditation. And essentially, what NEAS likes to say is that this is not a singular event, but something of a cycle in which we're consistently assessing, we're making plans based on that assessment, and we're periodically reporting to NEAS. So that's really the kind of why of accreditation. I think as school committee members, when the high school is accredited, you can say to your constituencies, you know, "We are really an institution that is committed to this whole process. And we're up on, you know, the recent philosophies in education, and we're committed to the reflection that's so important as teachers, as educators, in educating our kids." So that's the why. The cycle has changed a bit since NEAS started. They've changed it a little bit. So those of you who are familiar with NEAS from the last time around, it's a little bit different now. The self-reflection process is actually what we're currently doing. In November, we'll be hosting a collaborative conference where the visiting team comes down for two days, takes a look at our report, and hopefully agrees with our assessment of ourselves and the priorities we've set for ourselves, and writes up a report giving us a sense of, you know, where we need to go. And that will spawn the school growth plan development and the implementation phase. Then we'll have a decennial accreditation visit when they'll come out and make sure that we're following up on the things that we said we were going to do. And then more revisions and progress reports that respond to those revisions. So that's the 10-year cycle of accreditation. Sorry. That's okay. So the self-reflection report. This is the part where we really, this is exactly where we are in the process right now. So the high school has spent this entire year thinking about where we measure up on the standards. And Stacy and I and John and Jen will be pulling together what the staff has been working on and write a self-reflection report over the summer. When the staff comes back, we'll then be reviewing it and revising it according to their feedback. And as you can see from the slide, essentially, it provides, first off, a look back at who we are. It assesses, you know, who we are now, our strengths, our needs for improvements, and evaluates our capacity for that growth and improvement. And then talks about our long-term vision and goals based on all of that. And at the end of it, identifies priorities for growth. And when the team comes down for the collaborative conference, the priority areas for growth they're really going to look at, and they're either going to agree with us or, you know, possibly add one or two other priorities that they discover in the process of their visit, in which they'll be seeing students and looking into classrooms and talking to stakeholders. You know, I mean, the whole process, at the end of the day, is about that growth and improvement. And obviously, your support is really important. You know, we live in an incredibly supportive community. And the NEAS process, I think, allows us to kind of show the community who we are and what we do, and also where we want to go. So Stacy's going to talk a bit about what those standards are. They're in your packets, but we thought we would pull them up and talk about them briefly.
So there are five core elements or standards for NEAS. The first one is the learning culture, which looks at the culture and environment of the school, whether we have a safe and inclusive school that allows students to work towards our vision of a graduate. And so this is where our work around that will be important, and that's something we'll talk more about. The second one is the really big one, student learning. There are nine elements underneath standard two that look at written curriculum, instruction, use of technology in the classroom, teaching and learning, basically. Standard three is about professional practice. So the professional practices and organization that we have in order to support student learning. So this might be professional development. This might be collaboration. A school improvement plan, things like that would fall under standard three. Standard four is learning support. So looking to make sure the school has appropriate systems to support students and their well-being. So nurse, counselors, making sure that special education students are receiving the supports they need. And then standard five is actually learning resources. And so this is kind of the nuts and bolts, the school building, facilities, funding, whether we're practicing our lockdown drills, things like that. So this year, we've been working a lot on the self-reflection process. So during EWDs and our professional half-days, we've used that time to meet in departments and mixed groups of teachers and staff to look at the different standards and where we are with those, areas of strength, areas of growth, and providing evidence. It'll be very helpful when we write the self-reflection report. We've also been working on our vision of a graduate, which is something that they'll be looking at, but is also a good opportunity for us to have some good conversations. So we started that last summer when Envision Learning Partners came out and helped us pull together a draft of the vision of a graduate. So at this point, we have a draft. We're in the process of getting feedback. So we'll also be coming to you to get some feedback on the vision of a graduate. We also started drafting rubrics about each part of the vision of a graduate. One change we've already started as a result of these conversations are student-led conferences. So moving from the traditional parent-teacher conference, which at the high school was always a little bit tricky when you have seven teachers, to having it be an advisory. So with a student, parent, and their advisor, you could take a look at them as a whole student and their performance in high school so far. And then, back to the vision of a graduate.
So one of the central elements of the NEAS standards, the new NEAS standards, is this idea of creating a vision of a graduate. In the past, all schools had missions, and, you know, they were the type of thing that you would post up in the classroom. And they tended to be documents that were all over the school but weren't really living, breathing documents that I think that teachers and students really focused on. The vision of a graduate instead is meant to be a living, breathing document. It's meant to be the basis of everything we do, the articulation of everything we do, the idea of who is it that we want walking across the stage? What kind of student is all of our graduates? What skills do we want to guarantee all of them will be walking across the stage and getting their diploma that they can say they have? And this is every type of student, that, you know, the AP student to, you know, the Volk Tech student or whatever, you know, you want to think of, our special ed students, et cetera. So every single student, what kinds of understandings will they have? What kind of dispositions will they have? And so we talked a lot this year, as a result of the NEAS process, on, you know, what that student might look like. And, you know, we even had, you know, an illustration of a student and all of the types of skills that, you know, we would want to make sure that we could say every single one walking across that stage would have. And that draft vision, we're going to bring to reality next year. We'll be running with the draft vision and fleshing it out a bit more next year. I'll pull it up. I don't want to, you know, go crazy here, but just so that you know the big ones that the staff worked on. A lot of schools have similar elements to their vision. Collaboration, critical thinking, communication, those, the three Cs, those are the easy ones that I think these are the ones that every single person really kind of agreed upon. And then we went back and forth and back and forth about the other ones. So right now, we have something we're calling innovation. And, you know, we went back and forth about whether it should be creativity, creativity and innovation, et cetera. And then social responsibility, you know, the staff really talked a lot about, you know, what that means and what our, you know, that our students need to, you know, understand that they live in a community and that they can identify ways that they can impact the community, whether it's the local community, the broader community of the world, what have you. And then the last one, which I think has sort of a strange working title now, and that's reflect and adapt. And this is really about the importance, and I think you can see this within each skill, of students being able to think about their own learning. So, you know, after they've gone through a process of, say, doing a project, their ability to look back at what they've done, identify where they could be, they could do better. You know, students who are able to, you know, based on what load of courses they're carrying, make decisions about what they're going to do next year. You know, that kind of thinking. So there are a number of different ways of putting it. I think we probably wind up changing the actual language, the title of it, but I think as a staff, we really, this sort of disciplined area of, you know, that where that growth mindset, it's another sort of buzzword that is buzzing around education circles these days, but being able to think about your own learning is really that last piece. So we created, as Stacy said, rubrics for each one of these. And next year, we are going to start off the year putting this into action. So next steps.
Yes.
Yes. So as I said, implementing that draft vision and really thinking about designing assessments that assess that vision. So if we are going to say that it's important for our students to be able to do all the things I just had up on the projector, how do we know we're graduating those students who are able to communicate, who are able to think critically, who are able to reflect and adapt? How do we know that? Well, we've got to set up assessments that will assess it. So, and those assessments have to be regular. They have to happen in all classes. That has to be a piece of what we're doing, you know, on a regular basis. So those are the discussions we're going to be having next year, and they're going to be interesting discussions because, you know, assessing and thinking about assessment, that's a big chunk to chew off. And so we will be doing that next year. We're going to continue with the student-led conferences because I think a large part of the reflect and the adapt is that the students need to know what these skills are. They need to be able to say, "Well, you know, I worked on my communication. In this group work project, you know, my collaboration skills weren't so good. I didn't really respect the opinions of others. My own goal and vision became more important than everyone else." Being able to have language around that and talk around that. And that's, the student-led conferences are a powerful tool for that because it really has students pulling together, you know, how, where those skills appear in the different classes that they're in. We'll be finalizing the self-reflection report. As I mentioned earlier, as a staff, one of the first things we'll be doing is giving them our draft and then making sure that we've really accurately captured what they produced over the course of this year. And then in November, we'll be hosting the visiting team for the collaborative conference. And based upon what they, you know, report out on, we'll develop a school growth plan. And again, those priority areas really come from us in the self-reflection report, and they're added to, if needed, by the collaborative conference group that comes to visit. And then we're really off and running, putting those plans into place. The vision of a graduate is something we will say is a priority area because developing that vision of a graduate is essential to most of the standards. And if you look through them closely, you'll see that vision of a graduate weaves through all of the standards. So we already know that's a priority area. That's why we've started the work on developing it in as natural a process as possible. Part of that work will be for us to pull in community members and ask them, "These kids are coming out to work in your community. What do you envision as a Nantucket High School graduate? You know, these are your kids going on to, you know, whatever work or school they're going on to. As a parent, what do you want to see from a high school graduate?" So we'll be having, hosting those discussions into next year and have the community be a part of that vision so that by the end of next year, we can really finalize the vision of a graduate with the input from all the stakeholders.
That's it. Great. Thank you very much. Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Comment, yeah. I'm impressed with the amount of work you're putting into this. It's great. Thank you.
Thank you. Zona? Holly?
Very impressive. And I love how you're bringing in the community. And I would assume with the student-led conferences, it's really a lot more dialogue, conversations with students. But I wonder how you will, I mean, it'd be great for all students to be able to reflect, and they'll reflect differently, but do you see that it will be more of a narrative written by the teachers to hit the points during the course of the year to see that the students have reached certain goals? Because I, having had high school students, I don't know that they would necessarily have the same level of ability of reflection on whether they've met the standard or not. So do you see like a written report that teachers would include in a...
No, I mean, I think we, as I said, as we said, we did pilot the student-led conference. And the student-led conferences are something that middle school's been doing for a while and/or have done in the past. So they're not, it's not a new thing, but it's amazing what the students actually do in those conferences. When they're asked to think about, you know, what work they have done, they really, they're much more, you know, impressive than you think they might be. And we had parents who came in and said, you know, "What's this all about?" And then they walked out of those conferences really excited about what their student was identifying. I mean, I think that the vision of a graduate hopefully becomes something that is just second nature to every student, that they all will know all of those elements so well because all of the teachers will be addressing those skills throughout every single subject. And, you know, pulling from the rubric. So if I have a group work project and it involves a presentation, then I'll pull the language from the school-wide rubric and put it into probably a larger rubric. So a student should be able to articulate that. I, you know, part of that reflect and adapt is having the students truly having that capacity for, you know, metacognition essentially, and owning their learning. And I think, you know, one of the problems that we often have with, you know, all the technology out there and everything is students being so passive. And just the passivity is so frustrating. And this mechanism makes them responsible. And so it's kind of, it's beautiful to watch how they respond to that. So I don't think, I think, you know, the teachers will be doing our normal report cards. We'll be reporting out on content, you know, as we always have done. And this is just another layer, really asking the kids to understand their skills. So, I mean, I don't foresee a narrative, but, you know, it's a part of a student-led conference. And we went out to California and saw students get up and do a portfolio defense at the end of the year. All students at the school did it, from special education all the way up, and got up and talked about how they had met each of the parts of the vision of the graduate. So I think it's definitely something that can be done in a multitude of different ways.
Yeah, that's a great idea. Thank you.
Tim?
Thanks.
I just want to thank you guys. I can see this is definitely a lot of added work to what already you guys are doing. So we appreciate this, and we're looking forward to having you come back with me.
Thank you for doing this.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next is the ILT presentation with Donna Johnson and...
A host.
A host. And the team. And the team.
I'm going to go down and invite everybody up here to come down, so it gives you space. Viewers at home don't have to look at our heads. They're trying to see the screen.
Well, thanks for having us all here. This is most of our instructional leadership team. We have some who are at Nature's Classroom. Elise Kegline and Katie Mooney are there, and we're thrilled that the rest of our teachers. And Nina Slade is not here today, but I can assure you, everyone has collaborated on our presentation and given feedback. So we're here to share with you today a little bit about our instructional leadership team. This was a new initiative between the two elementary schools this year, and we really tied it closely to a new curriculum that we adopted, which was the Lucy Cockens Reading Units of Study to complement the Writing Units of Study that we already had implemented K5. So a little bit of history about our instructional leadership team. Last year, a group of administrators and teachers came together to really think about what is our PD plan? Can we have it mapped out at the beginning of the year, all the way through the end of the year? And what is our focus going to be? What do our teachers need? And we have quite a few meetings. We had a ton of ideas. There's a link. With a ton of ideas that were generated. And basically, what we came down to between teachers and administrators was we really wanted differentiated PD that was meeting the needs of different teams, different grade levels, different departments. We also thought about the idea of growing leaders from within. So we know in Nantucket that we have a wealth of resources right here on this island. So how do we tap into that and grow that? And then we also want to vertically have a through line. So with that, we're all speaking the same language. It may look different, but we're all, we all have the same goal. So the goal for year one was to really analyze our standards. We understand the standards, but this was really to just dig in a little bit deeper, actually, a lot deeper, and look at what does mastery look like? What's the rigor? What skills do kids need before they are able to master that? What practices can we use that facilitate mastery of those standards? And how can we make sure that we're assessing that appropriately? And then, since we had all of these new Readers Workshop materials, which are heavy, they're amazing, and they're a lot of work, we wanted to align that as much as possible to this new kind of pedagogy for reading instruction that we had adopted so that it wasn't one more thing, so that they married together. So who is on our ILT team? Well, it's administrators and teachers, and we're all working and learning together. So we have Taylor Murphy from kindergarten, Andrea Marr, who's our reading specialist, but she represented the first-grade team. Grace Antor Navish was our second-grade representative. We had Katie Mooney and Brienne from third grade. Kim Pignata represented fourth grade. Kim Kubisch, Nina, represented and supported NES. Eve Marie supported fifth grade and the overall functioning of the team at administrative level. And then myself and Elise were also a part of the team and supported the professional development that was shared with the rest of the team members. So sessions that we engaged in was really just a guide to unpacking the standards. So after being at CPS and being with teachers who, a lot of times, we're teaching one subject, it's really easy to dive into your one content area in a really deep way. And elementary becomes a little bit more challenging because you've got, you know, four, five, six different things that you're teaching every day. So we really began to unpack the ELA standards using resources and really digging into what that means. And looking at a vertical line from K to five, looking at like a standard RL1 or RL2. What does that look like? How does it grow? And it was interesting because what we found was, at NES, a lot of our teachers were like, "What? No, we reach way higher than that." And then at NIS, sometimes we kind of plateau, and the aha comes at maybe fifth grade where you're like, "Oh, my gosh, they need to be able to do all of that when you really lift the layers." So really looking at the differences, K5, and what those little nuanced changes are and how we can teach to those. We looked at standard-based assessment within Readers and Writers Workshop. So they're all based, all of our units are based in the Common Core standards, but really, how do we pull that out to know, because we do have a standard-based report card and we're charged with teaching and supporting students and proficiency in the standards, how are we pulling that out to make sure that we know that they have mastered different standards? We looked at close reading and shared reading. Close reading is generally something we do mid-second grade through 12th grade. And shared reading is where our younger kids all have access to a big book or a projectable, something where we're all reading it together. We looked at text complexity. So a lot of us are well aware of FMP levels. So we think about text complexity as something that can be quantitative, meaning what level is it? What lexile is it? But we're also looking at qualitative. So what makes that text difficult? Is it because it's on a tsunami and the kids have no background in that? And how do we accommodate that? We looked at text-dependent questions, the Common Core and the Mas Frameworks, really focused solely on text-dependent questions, not what do you think you or do if? Those are great thinking questions for kids, but we really need to have kids be able to pull out evidence from the text. And then, as with the team, we looked at planning protocols that we can use that can link all this work together and worked on leadership and really looking at what are the strengths of our team? What are areas that we need to grow and how can we support each other in supporting each other's teams? So just a little bit about Readers Workshop. We know that research tells us that in order for readers to grow, they need access to books they find fascinating. And at both schools, we have been building those classroom libraries and will continue to. They need a protected time to read, and they need expert instruction. It really comes down to volume of reading. And then we have some goals of Readers Workshop. And then we have some goals of readers workshop. Um, I'm not going to say too much about this because um, Nina was nice enough to add some videos to our presentation that really outline what our kids are are doing. And so hopefully those will play. Maybe not. This is Jackie Phi and Deb Davis, two second grade teachers. Oh, but it's only a little play. Well. The best slide plans. I don't know if any of them will play. And I don't know what error five means. In my drive.
There was like a little bar on the bottom when you hit the last one, the second one, yeah. On the bottom, right there. Was there any play?
That just plays the presentation, I think. Alright, I'll come back to it. Sorry.
It's lovely.
I promise I played.
And heartfelt and genuine and um.
And if I knew exactly where I was on my drive, I would.
I can't help you with the tech.
Why?
Jen?
I promise, I promise it worked.
Look around with you for a minute.
Um, we can go on to our. Yeah, why, yes. Yeah, sure.
Does it mean?
Yes, is that okay?
Yeah. So if I can lean over you.
Yeah, because she had it on.
We missed a couple of slides before this, but we'll just jump in while we're trying to get the videos done. So um, I am looking at the page in the PowerPoint that says ILT member experiences and my name. And then you will see the photo of our um, K team, all dressed like characters from books. And the sign says, we are readers. And that was a unit of study that they did with their students. And the culmination of that was a parade around the building, all dressed as book characters to um, uh, excite our first graders and our second graders and our kindergartners who were doing it, but our pre-K students were also part of uh, watching our parade. So for me, there were four big bullets. We all become better educators. So when we have the time to do this work where we're learning and sharing and discussing and teaching each other, that makes us all better. The half days and the workshops for ILT throughout the entire um, school year gave us the time to do that work together. Personally, I think that was the greatest benefit. We worked together as a team multiple times, but then uh, they led their teams in the half days. Uh, certainly Donna just spoke about the goal was unpacking the standards. And so many of our teachers know the standards and several of them know how to unpack the standards. I actually think that was a tangential benefit. That while we, we said that's what we wanted to do, what really began to happen was digging into this resource and how it would address the standards. But then um, kind of working together so that we were cooperative. We valued each other's input. We um, gained significant knowledge in the resource. We planned how to teach using the resource. And then it became really teaching with intentionality. So that requires significant planning and um, knowing who we are teaching as well as taking that time to learn what we are teaching. Here she is. Okay. So they were um, teaching with intentionality, but also with consistency across the grade level as they all worked together and they would jigsaw the units, do the planning necessary to teach those units. It was vertically aligned because we were coming together to talk about what was happening at each um, grade level. I think that um, if you asked our teachers how they felt at the beginning of the year, there was a tremendous sense of overwhelm. But this time that we put in and this thoughtful planning and work that was done throughout the year, they would have a totally different take, I believe, on where they are now versus where they were at the beginning of this. And um, the growth of our students was significant. Donna spoke to this committee last year and talked about stamina with kindergarteners in a district she had been in before and that kindergarten teachers were somewhat resistant and didn't feel like kindergarteners should have those books in front of them or get there. And we use certainly F and P levels. And and it's recommended that kids leave kindergarten at a D level. They are finding kids that are HIJ. And this is largely due to their explicit intentional teaching, but also the volume that our kids were reading. Another side benefit that I just want to mention, and certainly I'm speaking to the three that work in my building, Taylor is already a leader. She's a team leader and this opportunity, she took on the information, did all the planning. Her team really supports her as a leader because she um, is thoughtful and meticulous. And so that was fabulous for them. It worked beautifully because she was the team leader and she was the ILTPD provider for those half days. Andrea already has proven leadership skills. She certainly runs summer school before. She's done multiple professional development trainings for our staff. She was able to take that first grade team and pull in some other resources that we have purchased and used. The continuum, the Sarah Valls work on reading, teaching and writing, teaching, and really helped the first grade teachers then be explicit about other strategies that they would teach kids when they were doing some um, small group teaching. And then Grace Ann, we grew a new leader because this is not, that's not um, disparaging at all. Grace Ann jumped into this kind of not really sure and that's not a role she typically takes. But because her team is so connected, because she worked so hard at this, then their team grew and and really looked up to her as a leader doing this too. So that was yet another benefit of ILT.
Thank you. So ready for videos, we think.
Thank you.
Thank you. We think. Alright, we're just gonna do it. And hopefully they have sound. Or maybe not.
Oh, Eva, are you?
Hi.
I'm talking about your experience.
Absolutely. Sure, I'd be happy to. Um, so I took a bigger um, broad, broader stroke just because I know you're going to hear about some of the more finite details from um, everybody else. And I wanted to really emphasize the learning together piece and the impact that it had on me um, as an administrator. So I'll take that perspective. Thinking from a district and a school leadership perspective, I've been most excited about this opportunity as an administrator to learn alongside um, teachers and fully engage in this work with them. That, that was what I was most excited about at the start. Um, growing our own teacher leaders affords administrators the opportunity to recognize the expertise and the experience of our educators. Um, to truly engage in new learning alongside them and to learn and celebrate that expertise that they have and the experiences that they bring with them. I find the work of school and district administrators to be so incredibly varied because it occurs across multiple grade levels, whether you're a curriculum coordinator or a curriculum director or a building um, principal. Um, and it makes that challenging for us to know the curriculum inside and out as we um, continue on in our work. And it also can make it challenging to confidently lead others and knowing and understanding the depths of the standards and the nuances of the curriculum that you are not working with every single day. Um, so as a member, not a leader of the ILT team, I greatly valued um, digging deeply into the standards and the curricular work alongside the NES and the NIS teachers. And during our workshop sessions, um, we explored the tenants of leadership um, within the professional learning community that we became. And we explored our new reading units of study. We openly shared how things were going with our teams. As Donna mentioned, um, we were guiding one another. We problem solved together. We celebrated the work that we uh, were accomplishing together. That was our work as a group. And then the additional opportunity that I had to be the ILT leader for the fifth grade team afforded me the chance to engage with the curricular resources, the pacing guides, the ELA standards to the same degree as the teachers during our focused work sessions. So as a leader, a school leader, I had a rare opportunity to really get to know our curricular resources, um, to get to dig deeply uh, with the team into the work, to sift through the lessons, to determine the essential teaching points, create rigorous assessments aligned to the standards. I was able to do that work right alongside them. So fully investing in this work in this way as a school leader afforded me the opportunity to thoroughly um, understand the work of third grade and fourth grade, even though I only got to visit them. And they supported me as a leader of the fifth grade team because I leaned on them a lot to help me with that work. It makes me a far better observer of professional practice now when I go in and see ELA lessons, having done that work alongside them. And then what is most significant is that I have ILT teammates that I can go to when I want to learn more about our standards based ELA teaching and learning because they are now um, the expert leaders in our building. So all those benefits from an administrative perspective, I can't say enough what a great experience this was.
We have sound.
Yay.
Maybe not. Oh, oh, yeah, we do. Does it turn up?
Reading the entire time. When I originally heard that we weren't going to be running centers in our classrooms, I thought, oh, my gosh, what am I going to do without all these hands-on activities? But to see the value that they gained by just reading the entire time and letting me have the opportunity to meet with them one-on-one, see where their strengths are, where their weaknesses are, pull strategy groups together and just push them further as readers was amazing. You feel the same way?
Yeah. I'm Deb Davis. Um, I teach second grade at NES. And for me, it was, it was the excitement of the kids really buying into the program, really enjoying when it was reading time and being very independent in their reading. So I saved their reading logs from this year. And I, I have to say that they were so invested in handing in these reading logs, in sharing with me what they were reading. I probably shouldn't say it, but I talked to my husband, who's an eighth grade reading teacher. And I said, I put his reading logs to shame because these were amazing. So um, we're training them early for you up in the middle school to read independently.
Didn't you find like the kids were communicating more and talking more about books?
About their reading.
And then what I loved about readers workshop too is it gave strategies for them to work on and they had to go find that information in the book and just like locate, I don't know, evidence. It was just a different style.
They were doing a lot of annotating already in second grade. Again, getting them ready for the upper grades and for middle school. So um, the practice was great for them. And again, all independent, very much independent.
Some students' perspective.
So tell me about reading this year.
It was fun. We got like a lot of books done. And I'm on my 23rd reading log. Because reading logs, they're easy and they're not hard at all.
I'm on my 53rd reading log. And um, I really enjoy reading because um, it's like you go on and just totally invent like a new adventure.
And I'm on my 3rd and.
I think you talked about the types of books that you read. You used to read skinny ones. Can you talk about that? Are you reading harder books now? That's huge. That's awesome.
Um, my books, they're like hard. They might be a little hard for like other people, but they're like big, like super big. Like I'm reading like ginormous Harry Potter books. They're like this fat, it's um, 8,045 pages. It's easy, like it's so easy, like the words, like it gets harder. Like each page, like it's gets like more and more hard.
Um, and the book that I really like right now is um, Humphrey and Huffy Place. The book I really like right now is Kylie, uh, is Kylie Jane. And.
My, my favorite, my absolute favorite book to read is Harry Potter because I get to read it with my brother and because, and Zoe and Sassafras. My baby sister named Zoe. But the Harry Potter, like my brother's 12, so he obviously thinks it's like so easy. It's a little hard for me, but then he like teaches me about it a lot. And I go to the club with my brother sometimes. So we, we meet up in the learning center and we um, try to read together. We trust me, we're together with his friend Isaac and Forbes.
Oh, sorry. That was wrapped up there. And then we just have a couple of short clips of, of what this readers workshop classroom looks like.
Those were three second grade students and they were.
So another component of the program is.
On level child and an above level child.
I have lots of anchor charts for the kids. And we have them up during the lessons and they really, um, they actually help me create some added anchor charts. But the program comes with anchor charts that they give you so that a kid can really um, keep track and we can review what we've been working on all week on, on the charts. So they log into making these with me and into our collection of anchor charts.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Books.
So this is one example of a classroom library that was set up. I used to have a library set up that was entirely different. And then with the help of an instructor that came to our school, she was able to show the value in sorting the books that the way that I did. And to set up like a shopping day list for the kids and to really spend a lot of time in the beginning of the school year on how to choose an I pick book or just write book for the students. So when they are reading, they're actually reading books that are at their level that they're able to read independently. So I have a lot of books just set up like in a nonfiction section, which doesn't open until at a certain point in the um, school time and the program when it happens. But then it's set up by levels and then there's genres within the um, levels as well. So students can find leveled books in each genre of interest or just high interest books that are leveled for them to enjoy.
And that was such a nice shift this year, Jackie. Like um, of course, again overwhelming, like wow, now I need to read to my library. But you've seen the importance of it.
And I love it how the books are faced out. They used to only be able to see the spine of the book, but this way they can flip through the books and yes, kind of judge a book by its cover and see if that's of interest to them and it's worked really well.
Great. Well, thank you for sharing that with us.
Alright, we're back on track. And here are some pictures from NIS, just of close reading of kids using technology, books, note taking, readers notebooks, collaboration among teachers and um, kids in um, doing group work. We talked a little bit about the standards. The great thing about ELA standards is that there are anchor standards and they build upon each other from kindergarten through 12th grade. and they build upon each other from kindergarten through 12th grade. And kindergarten.
So Kim spoke to it a little bit, but we, one thing teachers are always saying they need more of is time. And having these half-days really gave us the time to work as a team on these units. I feel like we did, did it right when we took the time to sit and talk about them as a team, to go through the orientation to the units, to discuss what this unit's going to look like, how's it going, to have that like constant time to talk about the units. And since it was a new program, I really feel like we did it well for our first year. Kindergarten, obviously the rigor has changed and there's a lot of expectations now that have been pushed down. But it was really easy to take what the ILT topic was and find something that worked for the kindergarten level. For example, like when other grades were working on close reading, we made it shared reading because there's that prompting and support in the standards that talks about that. The kindergartners can do it, they just need that adult help. So that was something that we found really easy to do, to change and adapt what we were doing as a team. And then I just put a picture in here because one thing we got to do was that we had, we took the mini lesson and the workshop model and created a social studies unit based on the mini lesson and then independent practice. And that picture is one of the models the kids had built. They did the Lincoln Memorial, they did the Washington Monument, they did the White House, and then they did the reflecting pool just as a little extra.
We decided to combine the grade one and two because what we did was very similar. Kind of like Taylor, Kim and Donna have all said, and even Marie. It was all about collaboration. It was time for everybody to get together. It was sacred time for collaboration, to dig into all the resources. At grades one and two, we dug into the standards. We looked at how those standards are presented in the units of study. And then we tried to add in all the other resources we had. We were like blessed with a lot of resources this year. We had interactive read aloud resources, guided reading resources, the Jennifer Saravalo Reading Strategy Book resource. So all of those things really came together nicely because we had the time to go through it and really great time for the teams to discuss what's working for them. It was a great time for somebody to say, I do this. Oh, well, I do this. This didn't work well for me. How could I improve that? So it was a great time for reflection as well. It was really great. Like we got to, we received professional development and then we brought it back to our teams to apply it to the grade level and specifically the grade level standards.
They're great.
I, I can sort of tack on to everything that's already been said. I think that third grade, Katie, Mooney and I were both on the ILT. So we were in a little bit of a different situation that there were two of us, which I thought was great, but I don't think it has to be that way. It was nice for us to have the time to set goals and go into our PD time ready to work. Sometimes we can get caught up in the conversation. So the predetermined goals for us were extremely beneficial and allowed for a lot of productive work. It was nice to be able to take a program that we were extremely overwhelmed with and be able to delve into it as if it was not our first year. It was really nice to have that time. And again, we didn't have to spend it kind of going through what we needed to do. We already had that predetermined goal. And then our team really liked the, it coming from team members. So it was nice to have peers being the leaders.
Fourth grade.
Yeah, fourth grade felt very similarly. In fourth grade, we did, what I liked the most was the fact that I did ask my grade levels for input, the grade level members, and so that when I went to these workshops, I was able to have their thoughts in mind. And then I always gave them kind of a heads up of what was coming so that they could be prepared. But when we started, I already had a lot of things already planned out and ready to go. Like Brienne said, it was not wasting time trying to figure out how we want to best use it. That was already done by us in our workshop models. It also gave us a chance because of close reading and text-dependent questions that we were able to look more into social studies and science, which is really beneficial right now because even that, those standards are still somewhat new for us, especially social studies. So we were able to come up with lessons that were going to be able to be beneficial for reading time that used our content in social studies and science. And then what I really liked the most was that I learned so much more about what a benefit, like a strong PLC would look like through our talks and our workshops. And then I was able to bring that back to my PLCs with my grade four members and try to strengthen it there as well.
Great. And that's a beautiful segue. Elise isn't here, but she did a lot of the work for PLCs. And this is basically what we were working on. She writes instructional learning team members worked hard to lead the work, expected of a professional learning community, our big ideas, we're ensuring that students can learn, having a cultural collaboration and focusing on results. So we would often find highlights and areas of growth and really tackle those as a team to give each other feedback and suggestions. So we had ILT workshop days that people have mentioned. We had 12 of those, 12 two-and-a-half hour days, and then we had half-days to support this work together. And then we've all kind of identified hopes and dreams for work into next year. And I won't read the slides to you, but it just, it's varied with the different grade levels. But elementary, our standards have been changing, each subject changing almost yearly. So we have new ELA frameworks, we have new science standards, we have new social studies standards. So we really want to continue to keep up the work and grow in our understanding and our teaching of those standards. So these are pictures of our amazing teachers, and they truly are amazing, at work in their PLC, in their, on their half-days. So these are teams working together. Sometimes we did teams working together. Sometimes we did whole school. Sometimes we did both schools together, depending on the needs and what the team determined would be most beneficial. So the bottom picture is when NIS worked together on close reading and we're creating some anchor charts for the classroom. And then we have first grades and third grades. So I'm very proud to be part of this team and all the work that they've done.
Thank you very, very much.
Thank you. I'm going to open up a tiny question if you don't mind. Sure.
My admiration for each and every one of you. The time you're putting into this for our kids is growing by leaps and bounds. It's incredible. So good for the kids. And so much extra time that you're taking to do it is worthy of everyone's appreciation.
Thank you.
It's interesting to see how excited you seem to be about it and that certainly shows up with the kids.
It's a fabulous presentation. It's really, I really appreciate you coming so that we can have a better understanding of all the work that you've been doing. I was fortunate enough to borrow your materials. And I was also at the school one day when you were beginning to work on one of the units. And it's a tremendous amount of work that you've all put into this. I mean, so much reading and investigation and then digging in and then communicating. I love the model and I'm sitting here thinking, how can we have this happen throughout the system? Because I think what I'm hearing here is leadership and collaboration and recognition of the skills that you all have. So I, I wonder if it's an opportunity to look at the dollars that we have for professional development and see if we can cut this up differently sometimes because we've often heard that sometimes there's a disconnect with professional development. And what I heard tonight was that there's, you've appreciated the time and you've appreciated the collaboration, but you've also appreciated the natural leadership that's come out of, out of your team. So I just think that there's an opportunity to have more conversation on how we can maybe look at things differently for the future because this looks like a successful model. So thank you all for doing it. Thank you.
You know, I just want to say, reading is so important. You set the foundation for everything, for life. And the work you guys have done is just phenomenal. The excitement on those kids, the excitement in their voice, you know, 8,045 pages.
Books is big.
But thank you. I mean, I just can't, I'm, I'm, what comes to mind is, you know, when we hear our kids being in a certain grade and only in a fifth grade reading level and things like that. With a program like this, there will be no more. And I, and I'm sure that's our goal here. So thank you for that. Thank you for your efforts. And please know that you have our support in continuing and making this even better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have to say, along with all of my peers, I am so excited for you guys, for our students and for this program because it's incredible to hear everything you guys are accomplishing tonight. And I think it's especially important with the separation of our two schools that you guys still say, you know, stay and remain so connected so you have that, that smooth transition for our students and you're just continuing to build on what they've already learned and they continue to grow. So thank you so much. I'm very excited. We're all excited. Keep up the great work.
I just want to add also that, you know, a book, a real book, you cannot replace. I tried reading aloud, what? That's where you go. Sorry.
Have the same.
No, we don't need it anymore. Thank you so much, Donna. All right, moving on to discussions and votes to be taken. Some very exciting votes. May I have a vote to approve the Miriam Congdin Altshul and Evelyn McLaughlin Scholarship for 2019?
It's a move to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Beat me to it.
A vote to approve the Nantucket High School field trip to China, April 16th, 2020 to April 25th, 2020.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor? A vote to approve May 21st, 2019 meeting minutes?
Second.
All in favor? A vote to approve the April 23rd, 2019 workshop minutes?
Move to approve.
I want Zona in there.
I'm trying to give others a chance here. They're not taking it.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. A vote to approve transfers and invoices?
To move.
Second.
All in favor? All right, the superintendent's report, enrollment.
Oh, yes. As we do for the first session of each month, we have the enrollment. You'll see that it is up slightly, eight students. And I know that the principals are prepared to speak to what those changes are, but I think it continues to go up. That's always a, a mixed blessing. You know, it's job security on, on one hand, but it concerns us when those numbers go up. It's a little surprising to me to go up eight in, from May to June. That isn't typical. And so...
What do you have to offer for an explanation?
Well, I, I would speak to the economy, but I'll let the principals jump in and save me if I'm in error.
So I had a new student enter for second grade, speaks only Portuguese.
Relocation?
Yes. I think it's relocation. I think it is connected to the economy and that it's worth people are coming.
But at the same time, I'm sorry, at the same time, there was a youngster today in your school. It was his last day today. I heard Mary McGinnis speaking to him, so...
I think he's a little, little person who is leaving early to go to Eastern Europe.
Okay.
At NIS, we had two students actually return from NIS. They left late fall, early December, and they all returned recently and they spread back into the classes that they left.
It says four. It says four, you said two.
I looked at grade four and grade five comparison from the previous major. So I know about those two. I can dig deeper. You see tomorrow.
Just curious, and CPS? He's not here to...
Jamie.
We had an increase of one student to grade six. That's a brand new student. And we have a brand new student in grade seven who had enrolled in the fall and returned to Tucket, so that's considered an addition as well.
Thank you.
Okay. I thought, I thought it'd be appropriate for Dr. Bucky to talk about the activities this week for seniors. We have a lot going on and I think they have their first rehearsal tomorrow, but I'll, I'll let you take it away, Joe.
Quiet week at the high school. We have the second day of biology and tests tomorrow. But for our seniors, they have graduation rehearsal. The first one is tomorrow at 10:30. Thursday, they have their second graduation rehearsal at 10:30. Senior fall is Thursday night at the Great Harbor Yacht Club at 6 o'clock. We have the acolyte ceremony at 5:30 at the Utesan Tarian Church on Friday. And then the week culminates with commencement at 1 o'clock in the auditorium on Saturday. And you all have reservations.
I thought we moved at the noon.
We're trying.
It's going, it's going in that direction anyways, Zona, so...
I will say, I attended graduation last weekend at a school that started at 9:30 AM.
This is a big class, 1:30, right-ish?
And then it's not on the agenda, but just thought I would mention hiring. We continue to put a lot of work into that. There are several primary school positions, two kindergarten and two first grade, that were searching and interviewing. Some of those are close to being, you know, offered positions. And then the assistant principal search, I know that there were more interviews today. Down to two. And then at the intermediate school, lots of progress there. We just got a yes from a guidance counselor that we're excited about. And I think that the opening there right now is the ESL teacher. And we're still asking Kelly to figure out where that person is most needed between the elementary school and the intermediate school and how that might look. In the middle school, we've offered the music teacher, a PE teacher who have accepted, and a social worker. We have a candidate coming in, I think Thursday, for the special education position that I will meet on Thursday. We're looking for an eighth grade math and a teacher of Mandarin. That is ongoing. In the high school, we are looking for a high school math and a high school science. We met a candidate for math the other day that, that we like. And I think I had mentioned, oh, and a guidance counselor, a young man from Assumption College who was a admissions counselor in college and speaks Spanish. And so we got a yes from him this past week. So we're very excited and think that he'll be a great addition. So, and then I think I had mentioned at the last meeting, we have a speech therapist coming and a BCBA. So those are, those are all good things and hard to fill. So we're very fortunate, fortunate there, but we still have some work to do. And then there are several teaching assistant positions, some that are created because of newly budgeted positions and then others because of some retirements that have come about this year. So pretty good shape, not panicking yet. Little worried about the math, science in, in eighth grade and, and high school. But I, we have a... But I, we have our fingers crossed, we have some candidates for that, okay?
Thank you. Any questions, Thomas?
Just on housing, um, I know we have, I know we put out a lot of support, I know Logan does a lot to help.
She does.
But, um, do you, I mean, do they report back or do they, they've accepted the positions contingent on finding housing?
Housing, um, you know, is, is a challenge, and we know that it's a challenge and it's becoming a greater challenge right now. Logan is, is terrific at connecting people, and I know that she's had conversations and probably placed many already, but, um, I, I would still say to the public at large, we need housing. We need, um, school year housing and even better year, year-round housing, whether they're apartments or, um, you know, garage apartment or, or basement apartment or you name it, um, we need it for, for our staff. And I am hopeful that we will find something for every candidate, and we have in the past. But it is a concern for those people who are interviewing. And, and not, you know, well, I'll leave it at that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any subcommittee work groups? Do you wanna talk about net?
I would, I was gonna ask Mike, because he went on the trip. Would you like to talk about that, Mike?
I, I'd be happy to. We had mentioned at the last meeting of the, um, Nantucket Education Trust-sponsored trip for sophomores across the Sound. And, um, we brought 85 sophomores to the University of Massachusetts Amherst, and it was a very special day. It, you know, to get those kids out, first of all, earlier than they've ever gone college shopping, to get them onto a college campus, maybe 50% of them might never have stepped foot on a college campus. So whether UMass is right for them or not, um, they can start envisioning themselves going to college. And we're getting some feedback, Tracy Roberts was on the trip, um, with us. We had nine, um, superstar chaperones who, um, who went with the kids, and we probably could have done it with three. The, the kids were terrific, we took two, um, coach buses, 'cause I wasn't willing to go on a school bus all the way out to Amherst. But it, you know, you would have been proud of our students. Some of the reactions, some of the comments that we're getting from them. And, and one said, "I know that I don't wanna go to a big school now." That's fine, you know, that's, that's okay, if that helps narrow their search or know what they're comparing against. And, um, another young man, we were in the, um, college cafeteria, and I said, "So what do you think?" And he said, "Oh, I'm going here." And, um, so, you know, it's, it's just, you, you don't know what it is that they will learn from it. And you could speak as a mom, because Maddie, Maddie was on the trip.
My daughter went, she had an amazing time. She would be one of those students that said, "I realize that that school and campus is too big for me." But it's adorable, they, uh, her and so many of her friends came back wearing their UMass sweatshirts and, you know, their, their sweatpants. It was a very exciting day for all of those kids who had that opportunity. And I, as a parent and a school committee member, I can't thank you guys enough and all of the hard work that went into this, and all of the contributions that it took to make this trip happen, and I'm excited, and hopefully it'll continue next year for our sophomores.
I'm, I'm sure that it will, and I've heard a lot of good comments filtered back to me from parents in, in appreciation, and, um, I would be remiss if I didn't mention that all three counselors were there as chaperones, and I think it was great for them to be on the college campus. And I think they had seen UMass before, two of the three had seen UMass before, but it was good for them to listen to the presentations. And reaffirming to them to hear, um, the comments to the kids about what they need to do to get prepared. And one last comment, I did have one young man who said, "I need to get going." You know, "I need, I've, I've got some work to do, but, um, this is for me," so...
It was an amazing opportunity for our students, it truly was. And the other thing is, is it was, it's our state school, but it was just far enough to make it out of reach for so many families or students to get to, so it was incredible.
And it really was something the community got behind, I mean, our year-end effort to raise the money was, was, uh, very well.
This was all sophomores?
All sophomores.
So that was a huge percentage of that class.
That's a very, it was, it surpassed our, uh, hopes and, and dreams, so...
Was it by invite only?
No, um, all sophomores were, um, allowed, permitted, encouraged to go. Some, um, chose not to, there were a few, um, that had a baseball game that day that I, I know of, and, but there were, there weren't a lot of conflicts. And, you know, I, I know that several of them went because it was a day off from school. I'm not naive, you know, but I think even they came away learning something, um, from the experience, so...
My hope, my hope is that the ones that didn't make it, that maybe next year they could be invited. Because sometimes you just don't wanna go, and then you hear about all the things, you think, you think you missed out. It would be great if that opportunity...
We'd like to, we'd like to expand it, we'd like to do UMass and, um, maybe, um, Bridgewater and Stonehill, because they're close, which would give kids a different, um, experience.
Thank you very much. We're missing Henry.
We are.
We're missing Henry, okay.
If you wanna see Henry, come Saturday at 1 o'clock, 'cause I think he'll walk across that stage.
All right, so, um, our next agenda, uh, for June 18th.
Yep.
We have our LPAC.
We have athletics update and LPAC and the technology update, those are the key pieces.
And appointment of a clerk.
Yes, that's key too.
That is key, all right. Great. Any other questions?
Update on the retreat, other than the date?
No, if you guys actually, if you have any agenda items that you want to, um, include on the retreat, if you could email Mike, start thinking about that, these are just some suggestions.
And I, I will find a, a place off-campus, 'cause I think that was what was expressed by the committee in the past, is, um, so I'm, you know...
Perfect.
I'll make sure I get back to you on that.
Great.
Okay. Thank you.
Just a brief shout-out, I, there are so many, but I don't often get to comment on the high school. I went to the award ceremony last night, and I have to say, it was fun. It was fun, well-done, needless to say, but fun to see the broad range of students who got awards of some kind, so, well done.
Thank you, yeah, that was a lot of hard work for you and your staff, so thank you for putting that on and inviting us. And congratulations to the Nantucket High School Teacher of the Year, Mr. Brown. That's very exciting as well. All right.
Thank you.
May I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
All in favor? Thank you very much.